Success we have is not isolated to Milton High School. It's the four elementaries and the middle school. And also the support that we get from the parents.
Well, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Sorry to come in late. I had a work project and I went through this, but I obviously don't have any specific questions other than say, you know, I love the high school. So that's my comment, my editorial. My daughter was actually up here visiting today from college and just was so thrilled to be back on seeing all the teachers. So I have nothing but praise for you all. Short and sweet.
So, thank you for that great presentation. As always, it sounds like wonderful things are happening at the Milton High School. And the one thing that I wanted to ask about was the early release time and how you feel that's being used and whether it's enough. I mean, I guess we could always say we need more, but how do you think that's going?
So far, the early release time's been a blessing. We have not had the amount of professional collaboration time over the, over my previous three years up to the last two years where we finally got it, and it makes a world of difference. Today was one of our early release days and we got to spend three hours with math department folks, working from meeting to meeting, meeting by course, meeting by integrated courses versus AP courses to design common assessments, including mid-year exams, including preparation for AP exams that we really just don't have the time to do without it. So, so far, it's been a blessing to us.
Yeah, I mean, just a second. What Ben was saying, today we got, we can get done in three hours, what we could probably get done in three days in school. So, I mean, to be able to do that, to have that time, was huge. I mean, I thought it went great today. I really did.
If I could add to that, another thing that's nice about the early release days district-wide, today we had all of our instructional aides having, over at the Pierce Middle School, they were working with Pam Eli, a specialist, in helping our aides, again, raising the bar for the expectation of quality of services that they'll deliver into the students. And then we had all our special service people, OT, PT, excuse me, occupational therapists, physical therapists, special education teachers, they were over at the Glover. Now, without that early release day, in different times that we get out of school, that wouldn't necessarily happen. So that's, this, the last couple of times was the first time that they were able to do that. And so that, I believe, is a benefit. And just so people know, the school day ends at 2:19. Today's professional development day at the high school didn't end until 3:30.
Thank you.
So, congratulations. And this demonstrates what is fairly obvious from listening to all of you, Tom, and that is you're a team, you're working like a team, and when that happens, good things happen. So it's pretty clear that, directionally, things are going in the right direction. Just a couple of questions. And if you look at the celebrating success slide, there's a lot to be proud of. So my question is, 96% of the students in proficient and advanced in English Language Arts, 93% in math, 94% in science. The students that are not making those categories, is it the same core group of students or do they differ by discipline? Does the group differ by discipline?
Very good question. And because we have a very low percentage, I hate to talk about them in that because then you'd be identifying individual students. I will say this, sometimes a student that's not meeting with success in one category could be meeting, not meeting success in ELA, math, and science, so it could be the same student. And in some cases, I'll be straightforward, it is. And some of the students may have some, as I mentioned, some significant cognitive disabilities, but they have a value and they have potential and they're making progress. And that's why I love the fact that they came out with the student growth percentile, because we could look at it and see whether or not a student is making growth from year to year. And some of our student growth is well within the range, if not, it exceeds the average range of 40 to 60%. So we're looking at that. But the other piece, to your point, 93% or 96%, we hope it's 96% straight advance, as opposed to proficient. We like that percentage, that 2% that's in, needs improvement or whatever it is to be in proficient next year. But, you know, that is a very lofty goal, but we do have high expectations for our students.
So, two more questions. On the AP performance, do we have, normally I'm fond of saying, I'm not really interested in the statewide data, I'm interested in the Milton data, but in this case, on the AP performance, are there some statewide averages that we could compare ourselves to in terms of the number of students that are making the qualifying scores?
Yes. And I don't want to misquote them, but they're statewide and it's national. And I know for the past couple of years, we have far exceeded the state and national in terms of our numbers of students that are meeting with success. And just for people to know, the qualifying scores, they scored on a 1 through 5 scale, anywhere from a 3, 4, or 5 is a passing score. Depending on what college or university you go to, you may get college credit for that. So anything a 3 or above is considered a qualifying score.
Great. And the last question's on the reading specialists. Improving reading skills is difficult at any age, and I think we're smart to focus on grades 1, 2, and 3. So at the high school level, if you have a student that's reading below grade level, how much, how much time is it going to take to get that student up to grade level? I would, I would think the older they are and the longer they've written, been reading below grade level, the harder it is and the more time you need to get them to grade level.
That's another thing that came up, and one of the things that we talked about, even with the reading specialists, it's not just working with students, but it's also working with teachers who can infuse some of those strategies and skills within their daily instruction, and hopefully they too can work on that. And then that's students getting that repetition, that reinforcement, five, six, seven periods out of the day, depending on what it is that they do. I don't have the research, but to you, to your point, it is definitely harder as they get older, but it doesn't mean that we can't try.
Right, and we should try.
Right.
With the class sizes we have, is it reasonable to think that teachers will have time to do that kind of, that's, that's extra effort on their part?
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm gonna say it's extra effort, anyway. Our teachers work very hard. I'm not saying that for the teachers that are here. And we had this conversation earlier today. I could speak, I would say Milton Public Schools as a whole, having had the experience at the Pierce, having experience up here, you come in this building, teachers are sitting here collaborating, working all the way up until 5, 6 o'clock. I had teachers asking the building accessibility during the vacation, coming in and working. So our teachers are working and doing, but I think if they're taught those strategies, maybe even on these early release days and they're reinforced, if it's part of the instruction, it makes it a little bit easier. Not easy, but easier. So I do think it's a lot. I do think it's a lot. And when you talk about class sizes, I think we talked about this with writing, not to get into SAT data, I know what are the concerns we had as a little dip in writing, but if our class sizes go up, if you're an English teacher and you're servicing 100 students and you're asking them to do writing assignments with two to three pages, that's 200 to 300 pages a night that a teacher has to read thoroughly, give feedback, meaningful feedback, and get it back in a timely manner. So ideally, we'd love to keep the class sizes at a reasonable rate, so you could have more of those writing opportunities or more reading instruction and support for the students. But obviously, as you know, the higher the class sizes, the less one-on-one, individualized attention that the students are going to get, and it makes it harder for the teacher.
Right.
So lower class sizes, lower class sizes.
Yeah, that was the point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, James, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Milton High School Program of Study?
So, Mr. Jett, thank you very much for that presentation, and thank you to your psych council members as well for sharing your school improvement initiatives and, and your accomplishments. So we, you have submitted a copy of your program of studies to the school committee, and what we'd like at this time is to request that you could comment on some of the changes.
So in the program of studies for this year, there really have not been many major changes. There were some minor editing, but there's two bigger changes that I will speak about. One is the addition of a STAT course, which is Student Technology Assist Team, and I believe that's under the, is it under the technology department? And that course is to assist with how we have the Chromebooks now in high school, and the whole idea is to have a team available of students that can be on the, they're the first, first call, the first responders to when there's an issue with Chromebooks. This course is offered in other high schools that have one-to-one technology, and we're at the point at the high school where we have so many Chromebooks that we really, for next school year, could use. We're looking at, hopefully, being able to recruit one to two students per period, so it's a very small class, and they would be housed up here in the library with the librarian in charge of them. And they would be, if something goes wrong, that they can go and help out with the Chromebook, they can learn to fix the Chromebooks, they can hopefully make, maybe like a YouTube video of how to fix things. It would be a lot of self-directed learning, because a lot of this learning to fix Chromebooks, what I've learned from other schools, is you have to look online to have, to figure out how to do it. You have to watch videos to figure out how to do it, and then you have to leave the breadcrumb trails for, for the people who come after you. So we wanted to try to see if we could get a small group of students who may be interested in this. We didn't want to limit it, limit it to the upperclassmen. We want to have it open to any student who might be interested in taking this course. Now, when they're not busy with having technology calls, per se, they could be working on independent study topics such as making a manual for how to fix things. We hope that they could be skillful in assisting with Chromebooks, assisting with iPads, assisting with teachers in technology, maybe even setting up presentations or, or things like that with teachers, so they can be just on-call. And it will also help with our IT staff as an extra support, because some of the calls that they get could be helped out by a student. They don't need to address all of those, the minor things.
So what's the title of that course?
Sorry?
What's the title of that course?
STAT, Student, Student Technology Assist Team. So that's the one addition. It's a very small course, like I said, would be monitored by the school librarian, and we hope to house them, house the students up here. We also have to be able to recruit, we need to recruit students who are interested in this to make it work. So that's one addition. The other addition is in mathematics, there's a Course 3, I believe it's a Course 3 Accelerated course for next year. If you recall, we had, have done some moving around with our math courses in the high school, and last year was the first year that every student coming into the high school was taking Course 1. And that, those were our ninth graders last year. And then this year, those students are in Course 2. So in order to better prepare the students for taking the AP courses their senior year, we find a need to have an accelerated Course 3 course, specifically for the students who are going into AP Calculus BC. When we were shifting the courses around, we found that there, there's a need to better prepare these students for the BC Calc, so they have to go at a more accelerated pace than the Course 3 honors. So it's not an addition of any staff or anything like that, the student numbers are here, it's just splitting them into a different section. So those are the two major changes.
Is this things accelerated Algebra II with trigonometry and statistics, Course 3?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I used our, our term for it.
No, sorry.
And that's, like I said, primarily for the AP Calculus BC, which is the most rigorous calculus course we have at the high school, to really make sure that we have those students at the right place from when they start that course.
And aside from that, it's pretty much small edits.
Okay.
So are the items highlighted new? Because under business offerings is financial accounting. Is that new this year? So what is the significance of the highlights in the document?
I, I just want to give the disclaimer, you guys got that Friday while we were on the, this week.
Oh, okay.
So we were told it was going to be approved next week, so we had to focus on a couple of things for this week, and we will be more willing to answer all of those at some point.
Okay. And then-
Some of them could be minor edits under those headers.
You'll confer with whoever created this document and let us know what the highlights mean, if anything?
We'll make sure you have that at that email light or after-
Yes.
I'm pretty sure, just from like going through this, from picking my class before, the highlights, they seem to just be on the class numbers. So it's kind of, when you're doing it online, you have to type in a certain number, so say I'm taking Computer Science Honors, it's 371.
Got it.
So when you see a highlight and the pound symbol, that just, I feel like they most likely just don't have a number for it yet.
Yeah, because there's only two major changes, and then some small edits, and some of those edits could be under those categories of the highlights, but we're making sure that we confirm that.
Great.
And then, sorry, the one other question was, I was, were we gonna introduce some STEM classes, or is STEM sort of the approach to science? Because I was looking through to see if there were some new classes with regard to STEM.
Ideally, we would like to do that.
Yeah.
We did extend the biotech class, as we talked about to a full year, but again, we don't have many breakdowns, and we would like to have that, if that's part of our agenda.
So I believe that was a no.
Yeah. Well, possible, because we did it, we tweaked it.
Well, the question was, are there any additional STEM classes? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I have a question about the language courses. I know a while ago, a couple of years ago, the Spanish classes, higher levels, the advanced was being combined, or the honors were being combined. Is that still happening in Spanish?
It's still happening, but it's something we're trying to move away from. It's a foot, too many different levels, it's very complicated.
Right.
But that was necessitated by different cuts and things like that, and the teacher expertise, but that was something that particularly my team, Fisher and I have had conversations about, we definitely need to work on.
Okay, great. And then the other question I had, which I probably should have asked at the last presentation, so you don't have to answer it now, but around, you talked about class sizes, and, not for now, but at some point, I'd be interested to know, what are the cla, how many classes do we have at the high school that you consider over-enrolled? I know we don't have a set amount, really, in a class, like a finite amount, but I'd be curious, what does it look like at the high school in terms of just, there's some classes I know that just don't have enough chairs in the room, which tells you it's overcrowded. I don't know if that's still true, but there were some classes that was true in.
Don't we have some classes that are 27, 28? And then we may have some classes that are a little lower than that. Unfortunately, some of our AP classes could have some lower enrollments, but that was part of our AP potential presentation today, to try to encourage kids to move up, fill those seats. So that is something that we look at.
Okay.
But we would definitely have that data, because that's something that we're working on now as part of our budget presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
You, um, may I just, may I add a comment about the STAT course?
Absolutely.
Mr. Jett, I just wanted to say, and, I wanted to say that the concept of the STAT course was discussed by our digital learning team and supported with great enthusiasm.
It's a great idea. It's a great idea.
It'd be a really wonderful experience for students who are interested in that field.
If Bob will advance, and a lot of the teachers-
Oh, yeah, yes.
-with technology. Absolutely.
Was that what you're saying, digital natives and digital immigrants?
And it's great, it's great job experience, too. It's really great.
Let us know when they're doing it. I mean, we could stop in.
Yeah.
Like, I know that member Bagley-Jones had some trouble with her phone.
Very funny.
So we had technology plan update on the agenda, but you have in your packet a memo from Bob Patterson, which says that due to some changes at the state level, we don't need to vote on or file a technology plan until February 2017, so we'll just keep moving on the agenda.
Excuse me, Ms. Jim.
Yes.
Just, number three, where it says submit information and data to the PARK Technology Readiness Tool. I guess I'd be interested in seeing where we are in the readiness for PARK. So if that's something that can just easily be disseminated, that would be great. If not, I don't want to make a whole bunch of work, but just to get an understanding of where we are in that continuum.
Assistant Superintendent Sheen, is that something we could do?
It is something that we can do. Right now, we have a, a plan in place with an update of the numbers of, of the Chromebooks that we have for the testing, and we're following those numbers. We're expecting actually tomorrow, or the first of the week, a delivery of additional Chromebooks as a result of our MFE grant funding. And so our, between Bob Patterson and Dr. Angela Burke, they are keeping track of all the numbers and making sure that we're PARK-ready at each of the schools, considering the computer labs as well as the individual devices. We also have a, a plan in place around training of staff. We have support for our students, so we have a plan in place for, for the PARK readiness for students around the use, use of technology as well as practice tests.
Great.
Thank you.
Approval of the draft 2015-2016 school year calendar?
So Dr. Pavlicek will have a comment on that.
But you have a draft calendar for 2015-2016. A couple of notes, because Labor Day is as late as it can be next year, on the 7th of September, actually, classes will start in September next year, for students on September 2nd and 3rd. Teachers will be back the 31st and 1st, and new teachers will be back the 27th, 28th of August. So it's the same calendar, it just looks a little later because of the lateness of Labor Day. It does, as a consequence to that, have the last day of, of school, the last half-day of school on Monday, the 20th of June, which is also, in a sense, as late as it can be because of the lateness of Labor Day. So we hope for not a lot of snow next winter, but that's, is basically the same calendar that we've used, with just the start times determined by Labor Day. It's the 183 days for teachers, 180 days for students. This is the standard calendar that we've had in the past with the early release days indicated, and, you know, parent-teacher conferences indicated and so forth.
Any questions? This requires a vote, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Kelly?
Just, it's so unfortunate to have the last day be a half-day scheduled on a Monday. I just think the likelihood of people showing up even is, it's not so great, so, for whatever.
We'll strike that from the record. Teachers will say, oh, well, the school committee said-
Harry Kelly said.
I just commented, that's all.
On the motion, all in favor? Shean, Adamus? Assistant Superintendent Sheen, do you want to talk about the budget presentation?
Yes, so, so we're, we're looking forward to having members of our leadership team attending PTO presentations that are scheduled, so that we can inform everyone about our, our budget process and our budget proposals. We have plans for a January 28th meeting at the Glover Elementary School. On February 2nd, we're scheduled to attend the PTO meeting at the Colly Court in Cunningham, February 11th, at the Pierce and Milton High School. And February 10th is tentative. We, there, there may be a school committee meeting that evening, we're not sure yet, so we, we, that, that is a tentative date, February 10th, for the Tecker Elementary School.
Ms. Kelly?
So the Pearson-Milton High School are a combined PTO meeting that will be held at-
The high school, the auditorium.
And then the one other comment, just in that it's PTO budget presentations, I'm surprised to hear that we're having our open hearing next week. And the reason being is we haven't even talked about sort of where we're at in terms of cuts and that kind of thing, and that's typically one of the reasons that parents or community members might come out and, and-
Right.
-to a budget hearing, so-
So, I'm going to talk about our schedule, so let's talk about that in the context of that. Because I, I think you're right. Initially, with the schedule we had, the thought was, we did want to give people the opportunity to come out before the budget was finalized, so we moved it much earlier in the year than had been. But now, given the current schedule, I think, I think you're right. So that's a perfect lead-in to Chairman's report and the school committee's schedule. And we have some changes, so I have revised copies. So, and, we have some changes and some proposed changes. So if you flip to page 2. Oh, no.
We need to go to the technology meeting versus students.
Yeah, I'll pass that along. Okay, so let's-
Now, page 3 is the only one you need, I think.
Let's work from the version that you have. So, page 2, on the version that has a page 2, January 7th. We had planned to talk about, as Ms. Kelly's just alluded to, we had planned to talk about the reduction list for our proposed fiscal '16 budget tonight, but we're not ready to do that yet. And we actually have a finance subcommittee meeting tomorrow and another one scheduled for Monday morning, after which we will be distributing to the school committee the finalized list there. So we're proposing to move that to the January 14th meeting. And, again, as Ms. Kelly has pointed out, we probably then would move the open budget hearing to, at the very earliest, the 4th. We had, if we followed our regular schedule, then our next scheduled school committee meeting would have been February 18th, but the 18th is school vacation week. So we looked at the 11th, the 11th, and as you can see, there are a number of things going on. There's the Pierce and Milton High School PTO meetings, and I also thought that was first-grade information night. Is that right?
I believe it is. Might be, yeah.
Yes.
So that presents a complication for the superintendent, even if it's not a school committee night. So I'm proposing that we meet on the 10th, because the 25th is not available either, because the warrant committee has requested to do their, what used to be their all-day Saturday meeting, and then now they're calling the all-night meeting on February 25th. So that would be here, as it was last year, with the warrant committee actually sitting at the table, and all the department heads, along with the school committee in the audience.
Jim and Walker, I just wanted to note that the first-grade information nights are held at the individual schools and may not necessarily interfere with the meeting if you prefer to have it.
Right, so the question was just whether, whether the superintendent would need to attend those. Are you with me?
Sure.
It looked like you had a question. So, to recap, approval of the potential reductions or the reductions list would occur on the 14th. The open budget hearing would move to February 4th. The second school committee meeting would be February 10th. And we would be available for the warrant committee at its own night meeting on February 25th, which would be here. Ms. Kelly?
So, given the present agenda for the 4th, would it make sense to move it out to the 10th, or- 10th, or for the open hearing?
The open hearing? We could.
And then, so, the Tucker meeting would not happen?
Right, so, as Assistant Superintendent Sheen alluded to, we have mentioned to the Tucker, I talked with Charlene this afternoon, and I think they have an alternative date, but we don't know what that is yet.
Would it be before the 10th? It would seem to me it would be fair if all the other schools had this presentation before the open hearing, that maybe they would be at least given to that opportunity.
Well, the open, okay, the, the open hearing is the opportunity primarily for the public. The PTOs have the opportunity for input and comment at the meetings, at the presentations.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, I didn't understand, so the all-day warrant committee meeting is still Saturday, the February 7th, right?
No, that's, that's gone. So they moved their all-day meeting back in the month in order, in order to have better information about revenue.
So when is it now?
It's February 25th.
Wednesday.
All right. So this is, the February 7th meeting is not happening?
Right.
Yeah, 7:30 they have to have it.
So, those are the proposed changes for your approval. If there are no questions, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the updated school committee calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I don't think there is.
All those in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Next, we have what will be the first of two report-outs from our own Michael Zulus, who's also the Chair of the Town School Consolidation Subcommittee. And as you saw, he has distributed some recommendations that will require our review and approval. And he will be also providing a presentation next meeting about some additional recommendations.
Thank you, yes, please. So, we do have a PowerPoint, no bells, no whistles, no graphics, no fun, but compelling, nonetheless. What we lack in flash, we have in substance, so at least hopefully you'll agree with that. Leroy circulated the memo that we produced on this issue, oh, thank you, the memo that we produced on two recommendations, paperless payroll and bi-weekly before the holiday. And this PowerPoint is just a review of some of the highlights of that. So, if I know how to do this, let's see. Oh, good. So first, who, who we are. This is a committee that was commissioned by the Board of Selectmen and by the school committee. It consists of the following members, Michael Blanchard, the Assistant Town Administrator, Administrator who is a designee for the Town Administrator when she's unavailable, Amy Dexter, the Town Accountant, Anne Marie Fagan, the Town Administrator, Phil Matthews, who is our Community Representative, Jim McCullough, the Town Treasurer, Glenn McCall, Glenn, Glenn Pavlicek, who is sitting to my right and myself. And I, I don't know if the cameras want to pan to the audience, but I'd like to thank the committee members for the support tonight in, in supporting this presentation and being here with us. No, I mean, they've, they've, we've all been working hard. So, our charge is on the next, oops, there we go. Our charge is on the next page, and that is a charge that was approved by the, by the Board of Selectmen and by this committee, and that is to explore opportunities for efficiencies in the business operations and information, information technology operations of the town and the school, and look for opportunities of, for consolidation and integration and efficiencies, and to make recommendations along those lines. We have met on several occasions since our, our beginning last February. We've met, I think, now 28 times. We usually meet on Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday mornings at 8:30, usually Tuesday mornings. And along with bad jokes and long-winded stories, we actually have been able to get a little work done. And the first two recommendations that you have are the, the, the two that came out of the box. And let me just say that what we, what we've been trying to do initially is to identify problems and identify things that we can fix. And we have been looking into, we have, we have initially looked into personnel, but initially, it seemed, I think the will of the committee and the consensus view was, let's look at things we can fix and that we can, we can improve in the operations and the efficiencies of the town and the school, and see if we can attack some of the problems that way. And so that, that has led to our initial recommendations. The first recommendation, there we go, is with respect to paperless payroll. And that means that town and school employees won't have to process checks manually, they won't have to sort them and stuff them and deliver them and distribute them. The idea is to create greater efficiency and to save the town and the school about 250 hours of labor per year, which amounts to about $14,000 if you translate it to, to dollars. That's a breakdown of what we see as the direct financial benefits in labor and materials from paperless payroll and automating payroll as opposed to, as opposed to delivering it by, through the mail. It will be, payroll would be done through email and direct deposit, as opposed to now where we, we distribute checks to all the, well, to some of the employees. The cost of this, the benefits, you've seen the cost of this, is approximately $8,200 a year for the treasurer to email payroll records to town and school employees for each pay period. We are aware, this, this has been adopted by the state and by several municipalities, and the state has guided us in providing for hardship, hardship exception for those who have difficulty accessing bank, banks or financial institutions during off-hours or have difficulty with electronic transfer. And we are proposing a policy which is identical to the state's hardship policy for those employees who are unable to participate in the, in the system. Here, it would be a petition to the Assistant Town Administrator for an exemption to the, to the paperless payroll system. Again, this is identical to the state with respect, with, with except to the, the individual identified as the, as the reviewer of the petitions. In terms of implementation, what we see is the, the fact that this may require impact bargaining with the town and school collective bargaining units. It is something that we don't see any downside to, and we hope there wouldn't be opposition to. In terms of funding, the Treasury's office would need to secure $8,200 in additional funding, as I mentioned before, for the cost to email the payroll records. If we were to adopt this at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July 1, 2015, we'd have to begin the process in May 2015, so we would hope to get this, if we can, if we can do it, get it approved by town meeting, and get that allocation of funds approved by town meeting, so the treasurer could distribute to employees direct deposit forms, hardship exemption forms, and instructions, so we could, we could get this, this system implemented starting July 1. And so our request is that the school committee support this implementation and support the town treasurer in seeking the funding of $8,200 to, for the cost to email the payroll records. I will say, and I, and this shouldn't diminish the, the need for the request, but if we are able to, to act on the recommendation that I'll be speaking about next week, which is updated financial software, then that $8,200 will go away. And now the financial software is much more than $8,200, but that $8,200 would go away to the extent we're able to upgrade our financial software. So that's just a, just an FYI. I don't think, at this point, we don't know that we'll get the approval for the financial software, so in order to adopt this, we would need the additional $8,200. We, we think it's, it's a bit of a no-brainer, because we've identified at least the equivalent of $14,000 in costs, cost savings, and so $8,200 for, at a minimum, $14,000. And that's not even, that's not even addressing the efficiencies from having everyone on the same system. We think that that makes good sense. So, I don't know if, if the Chair wants to take our request for support of these two recommendations separately, or, or both at the end.
The latter.
Okay. So, the next...
Kelly?
Can we just ask some questions? So, in the, the cost analysis?
Yep.
There is no expectation that present employees would, no, not, not work the hours that you identify?
No, that, that's not been part of analysis. I mean, what, what the, what the analysis is really, is that you're saving, you're saving about, in this case, 250 hours, that these employees can actually do analytical work and the important work of their jobs, rather than stuffing envelopes and, and distributing checks and, and all of those things that are just really busy work, rather than the important work that they should be doing. So, we haven't identified individuals that wouldn't be working those hours. That's the equivalent for the...
Right, so I guess in terms of the presentation of the net benefit, then those would be footnotes and not part of the actual cost analysis, I guess, is what I would recommend. Do you know what I'm saying? In other words, if someone was looking this purely from a dollar perspective, if you were to take the present $14,000 and subtract the $8,200, it's $6,000 net savings. But really, it isn't because some, the material costs, I'm presuming, would not be spent, won't be spent.
Right.
It really is a material cost as opposed to the labor, I think, if I'm understanding it correctly.
For the direct cost, right. That's an equivalent, the $14,000 is an equivalent in terms of the, the hours that you'd be, the, the work that you'd be saving, the hours that you'd be saving. That's right.
And then, is the request a reserve fund transfer? Is it anticipated to happen in this fiscal year? Or are you proposing that it happen as part of the annual budget process?
The annual budget. I think if we can get approval in May, then we can, we can do it by July 1. So if we can get approval for the treasurer's, for the treasurer's budget of an, an additional $8,200, and we have that approved by town meeting in May, then we can, we can get it up and running as of July 1.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, so, the next recommendation is bi-weekly payroll. And this has less, excuse me, less effect on the schools than on the town, because most of the school payroll is now bi-weekly. Teachers are all bi-weekly. We have custodians and food service personnel who are still weekly. But on the town side, there's a significant number of employees who are still weekly as opposed to bi-weekly. The idea here is that we, the town, if there are fewer payrolls and fewer transactions and fewer costs, then there would be a efficiency savings if all of the town and, and school employees were on the same payroll schedule, and they were being paid, they were being paid only 26 times a year, as opposed to 52 times a year. And again, I should point out, as with paperless payroll, bi-weekly payroll is something that was identified by the Department of Revenue, is something that we could improve and improve efficiencies with the town. The benefits, again, primarily in terms of labor costs are with the town treasurer's office, because they'll be processing 26 payrolls as opposed to 52 a year, approximately 384 hours of treasurer's office direct labor, labor time. The costs are none for this. And the implementation, this would, again, this would require, as opposed to impact bargaining, would require, we believe, collective bargaining negotiation with the units in town. Again, for the schools, the teachers are already being paid bi-weekly, so with respect to the school department employees, we're only talking about the AFSCME employees. And we'd have to have a 90-day prior notice to the union members. So that's something that would have to be, again, have to be resolved with the unions, and we'd hope that, other than changing the number of, the, other than changing a payroll schedule, doesn't really change anything with respect to the, the pay to the, to the employees. We hope that there wouldn't be any opposition to that. In terms of implementation, if we go forward with this, the town accountant and the town treasurer and the school department would have to revise payroll dates, and they'd have to get their accounting and payroll systems in sync by July 1 in order to make this happen, but our expectation is that that could happen. And so our request on this is that the school committee, again, formally support this implementation to begin no later than the start of the fiscal year in 2016, which is July 1 of this year. And that is the, the end of our recommendations for this evening.
Would you like to make a motion on your recommendations?
Well, I was hoping someone else would make a motion.
I'll second that.
I was going to motion that you add back in the bells and whistles.
I'll, I'll, I'll do my best for next week.
No, it's great. I mean, so many places have gone to this, it's such a great thing to do.
You know, I think the consensus in the committee is that these are really no-brainers. This was the low-hanging fruit. You know, when I, next week, when you're talking about upgrading financial software, the numbers are bigger. But this is just, this is just low-hanging fruit.
So, Maureen, just in case you didn't get that, Mr. Zulus kind of made a motion, and Walker seconded it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll formally make a motion that, that the school committee, school committee support the implementation of both of these policy, of both of these recommendations.
Second. The discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much, and...
Mr. Zulus?
I think the committee, although I don't think we can hear them out there, is wildly applauding the action of the school committee.
Ms. Kelly, Finance Subcommittee?
Yes, I believe we have a warrant approval.
Do we have vendor warrant number 28, which is dated January 8th, 2015, and it's in the amount of $536,139 and 1 cent.
So I would move approval of the vendor warrant, sorry, what number was it?
28.
28, in the amount of $536,139 and 1 cent.
Second. A discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained. 401, 401.
And that's it for Finance Subcommittee?
Health and Wellness, we have anything on Health and Wellness?
Yep, real quick. And Becky, feel free to jump in, and our student representative left, but that's okay. As always, I think, Becky, you would agree that we're very busy. The focus has really been on the substance abuse and chemical awareness. I know it was up on the Milton High School pages, and I don't know if Assistant Superintendent meant to remind the people about the Chris Heron presentation?
We didn't.
You did, great. Say it again, January 15th, and Katie Greer, the Internet Safety Night, on February 12th, which is another outstanding presentation. We have been discussing the budget priorities that the Health and Wellness Committee has, and obviously, we're asking for no cuts in health and wellness, health educators, so we're just putting that out there, and we have some curriculum materials that we might come and ask for some money. out there, and we have some curriculum materials that we might come and ask for some money from, but we don't know that we'll get it, but we might come and ask for it. There are five grants out there that the committee didn't write, but they're aligned with the committee. One is a substance abuse one that was written by Carolyn Kinsella and Vicky McCarthy, and they are both on the committee. And four others were written by Dr. Karen Spalding, but they align with us. So hopefully, we'll get at least one of those five. We're looking forward to having an update from the Bullying Prevention Committee at our next meeting on January 30, and we can report back on that, but it's been a while since we looked at that, so we want to look at that again. The Resource Pages Project, which has been long in the making, is about to be rolled out. Maura's going to help us roll it out. We'll get it out on the webpage. The Adjustment Counselor on the Committee, Rich Guarino, really came up with this idea a while ago, that the issues Milton families are facing really could be helped a lot electronically because, just like across the country, lots of folks are experiencing financial difficulties that they didn't before, or mental health issues, or substance abuse issues. So this is a way for people to be able to access these resources confidentially and also be in contact with the Adjustment Counselors if they need to. There were, I know recently, and this is why our focus has remained on substance abuse and these resource pages and grants, is that just recently in December, there were two young men in their twenties, not from Milton, but in the South Shore, both whom died of heroin overdoses. And, you know, we're seeing this across the country, and we had a child, the young man die in Milton a couple of years ago from a heroin overdose. So, you know, we really need to get that out there and get teens and parents a way to access some services. So on the resource pages, on the website, there are eight tabs. You click on which tab you're interested in, and it has agencies or webpages and/or phone numbers, eating disorders, substance abuse, mental health, food and fuel and housing, and a couple of other tabs that I don't remember off the top of my head what they are, but you'll all see it on the webpage when you pursue it in eagerness to see what's there. Correct? Yes. So I think that we're doing well and looking at a lot of issues. Becky, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Just Jackie Morgan has done her wonderful work again in increase, getting a breakfast cart for the middle school. So now the middle school has a breakfast cart, and I think she's increased the percentage of kids having breakfast now at the middle school, like a huge amount. I don't have the numbers before me, but the numbers went from like twenty-nine to like over a hundred or something like that, so that was exciting. And I know you probably heard in the Milton presentation that the high school kids do get a snack now, and that has been discussed at length. So they were very happy to know that was coming because, you know, they all seemed very hungry, not in our meetings, because we have a whole layout of food for our Health and Wellness meetings, but as they go away to their sad little no-snap classes. Finally going to change. And, no, I think that was pretty much it. The Chris Heron thing has kind of exploded on Facebook. People have been sharing, I don't know who posted it originally, but they've been sharing it all over the place. A lot of people are excited about it, and I think Mr. Walker and I went to it last year. I know you did too, Kristen, but we, I'm going to go again. I mean, I think it was phenomenal presentation, not to be missed, so.
It really was. I can't go this year because I'm starting teaching again, but it was a great presentation, and the kids and a lot of the teachers and coaches like it because they know who he was, and they have, I mean, I think John Phelan played basketball opposite him on one year, which is unbelievable. But anyway...
That would have been a sight to see.
I think it was over pretty quick.
We won't tell this, but I think that, you know, our struggle has always been, how do we present issues that aren't just one-night things, but we really don't have a chance, so we're trying to make them as exciting and interesting as we can. I know Ms. Gormley is very much wanting a mandatory chemical awareness and substance abuse night for all athletes, not because we don't think the other kids have issues, but because that's one captive audience. We could mandate that their parents and them come in for this. So that's been a big push that Larry Rooney is following up on, but I think that's about it. We have an active group, and it's good.
Yeah. Mr. Pavlichak?
And just to reiterate, Chris Heron Night is fundamentally sponsored by Beth Israel Deaconess Milton Hospital. They made a generous donation to bring him here, and so we want to thank them again. That's part of the work of the committee is to work with BIDM.
That's right. He is very expensive, but worth it.
Ms. Kelly?
The Resource Pages sounds fabulous.
Project.
A project. And so the proposal is that you could access this through the Milton Public Schools website?
Yes.
I guess I would maybe encourage you to also have it accessible through the Town of Milton website, if possible?
Oh.
Just because the more venues that you can engage people and families, the better off, but it sounds fabulous. I think that's terrific.
No, that's a good idea. Maybe we'll get it up on the website and iron out some of the kinks, and then put it in other places, and Maura's going to help with some publicity about it, and we're trying to get the word out on it.
Or even the library website as well. I mean, just as many places that if people access.
That's right.
I think that'd be great.
That's right.
Fabulous.
So it'll be good to see up there finally. It's been a long time coming, so that's it.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee?
Yes, again. It's a big night. Hot off the presses, and I apologize that you haven't received it sooner, but it was just approved about two and a half hours ago by the Policy Subcommittee, and that is our proposed cash management policy that we're not, because of the late opportunity to provide this, we're not seeking a vote on tonight, but perhaps a first reading, and we can describe what the genesis for the policy is and describe it generally, and then, you know, commit it to your quiet contemplation after the meeting. So in terms of the genesis of the policy, we have had recommendations from a consultant with respect to cash management, and that consultant has made recommendations on what should overarching goals and specific processes and procedures. It was the view of the Policy Subcommittee that the policy should be the overarching goals and guidelines, and that the superintendent should issue regulations, which would be the specific processes and procedures under those overarching guidelines. So that was the approach that we took, and that has resulted in what is before you. And just generally, the policy requires a superintendent to issue regulations regarding processes and procedures for collection and disbursement of cash. The primary objection, objectives are to reduce risks and to protect personnel from allegations, to retain documentation, and to increase operational efficiency of cash management. The key requirements of the regulations should be the strict separation of duties, and there's a little bit of a description in the policy of that. Banking restrictions for Milton Public School personnel, which basically would require that no Milton Public School personnel open or maintain bank accounts for funds received for Milton Public School programs, and that Milton Public School personnel should not hold any Milton Public School funds in their personal bank accounts. And then, finally, the key requirement of this, of these regulations should be specific processes and procedures. And again, the outside consultant has recommended specific processes and procedures for cash receipts, cash dispersments, quality review of the cash receipts process, document retention, and policies and procedures for the high school student activity accounts. And so with that, I would commend this policy to you for a first reading this evening with the hope that we can answer any questions, and then perhaps have a second reading next week, is it, next week? And if everyone agrees, adoption.
Maggie Jones?
Do we approve it first, or can I ask a question?
You can ask a question.
Okay. So we didn't have any policy like this before?
We have a couple of policies that talk about gate receipts and admissions and...
Okay, but not one central one?
What's that?
Not one central one?
No, not one central policy. We have another policy, general policy about cash in school buildings, but not this kind of overarching cash management policy. No.
Okay, so that's great. And then a follow-up question to that. At the bottom where you say specific processes and procedures, right?
Yeah.
Last bullet point?
Yeah.
So that's the person you talked about is going to make some, has made some recommendations for that? And then where do those specific details on the specific plans get kept? Are they with Dr. Pavlichak?
They would be with the administration. They would be, the regulations that we're proposing that the superintendent would issue would be kept and operated by the administration. They are subject to our review under our policy, and I can pull it out, but we have a policy about regulations under policies, and I can actually, if I can pull it out...
So with that...
We actually have the obligation to review regulations, so we would review the regulations issued by the superintendent. Now, it's my understanding, and Glenn can elaborate on this, but it's my understanding that these policies and procedures are now in place that have been recommended by the consultant, and they're trying to work out the kinks. And one of the things we talked about in Policy Subcommittee was a timeline for final issuance by the superintendent and review by the school committee of those policies and procedures. And so maybe Glenn and Mary can elaborate on those two things.
We've had meetings with different groups of staff, from administrative assistants who will be most impacted by it, because we're, you know, centralizing collections of receipts in the various buildings, to just faculty in general. And we've, you know, we worked through it first with the principals and different groups. The processes are fairly well outlined by the auditors, and we've put them forward, and we're in the process of implementing them all. You're seeing, you know, two people taking tickets at doors and writing up receipts and double counting and so forth, and a distribution of duties, where the person who is saying that these are the children who are going on a field trip is not the person who's collecting the money, and a variety of things like that that are already in place. What we are, you know, it is essentially a trial period here for the next few months just to make sure we can get this all worked out. We have to, I mean, there's some purchases we have to do if money is going to be handled at various schools. We have to have, you know, secure facilities to store it before it gets turned over to my office, before it gets turned over to Town Hall. So there's a variety of different pieces that have to be worked out, and it'll remain to be seen what happens when the first hundred-and-fifty kindergarteners want to go on a field trip and all show up at the main office the same day with their envelopes with little checks in them. We'll see how that plays out, but, you know, there's some kinks that will get worked out of it. But we're taking the auditor's recommendation at face value and trying to implement it. We'll just see how it works in our particular circumstance. Our goal is to say that, you know, by the end of the school year, we'll have a, we should have a reasonable idea of what works, what doesn't, and have regulations that we can disseminate to the school committee for their approval. I mean, we can disseminate them now. We can show you what we have, but it's a little early to say that these are etched in stone. But we're pretty sure that these are going to work.
I would be interested to see them sooner than later, only to take them in and sort of get my head around the information.
Sure.
Because it's been, I was glad to hear you say, you know, the same person who collects isn't the one accounting, isn't the one taking it to the bank, you know, that there's some checks and balances, additional checks and balances. And then I would be curious if the auditor thought that we still have any vulnerable areas, like I remember a number of years ago, the vending machines, which is all cash, things like that. Like have all, any vulnerable area, have they all been addressed?
The auditors have been doing some selective testing of receipts and processes over the last several years. They have yet to issue a final report on that. In fact, they had about twenty items of the hundreds they had picked out that they couldn't find the documentation for, and we've just found the documentation and passing it on to them. You know, they would do things like say, well, so-and-so played soccer three years ago. Can we see their check? And when they looked in the files, they couldn't see their check, but when they asked us about it, we said, well, that's because grandma wrote it, and grandma has a different last name, and here's the check. So we were able to track down a lot of those things that the auditors just on their own couldn't do. In fact, we have the final batch to go into them in the next couple of days. So we're expecting a final report from them on basically the status of the system, which is the other half of what we hire them to do. They have, they've given us their recommendations going forward, but they haven't yet given us a final report on the status of the system as it stands right now.
I don't know if anybody else has a question, but I have another one. You know, and I, over the years, have heard of different places where money is in cash and how it gets collected, and, I mean, okay. But I guess I would be curious, and I'm not trying to make more work for anybody else, but since we have had some very bad experiences in this area, I was wondering, where, does anybody know where all the areas are that we collect cash at all times? Like, do you? Is it five hundred places? Is it five? Is it, you know, programs?
It's too many places. It's basically the answers where we handle cash. And that was part of the discussion we had with the staff, is that basically saying, you don't touch money. I mean, only the people we say touch money, touch money. And that's a limited group, depending on what the particular need is. For instance, you know, take field trips as the easiest example. If a teacher's going on a field trip, they should be giving a list to the school administrative assistants, saying, these are the kids who need to pay so much money. And that person should be collecting it and checking it off, and that person turns it over to us. And we're just trying to isolate. There will be still a lot of people who touch money, because when you think of all the different events and processes that go on here, whether, field trips are easy to sort of centralize, but you have gate receipts, you have, you know, concerts, you have just all sorts of, you know, things. We've done it very well with the food services, and basically, a lot of it is trying to mimic a lot of what we do with food services. We'd like to be able to go to online payments. We're trying to set up online payments for field trips, so you don't have to bring in money. So people could just go on and pay it, the way they can add money to the food services online or do other things online. We'd like to automate it as much as possible, and to that extent, we've set up some processes to do that. You will still have, you know, adult education...